The Lamonster City Council Meeting is brought to you by the generous support of the Service Oil Company, 345 R Lancaster Street, Lamonster, 978-466-1922.
All set?
Yes, we are ready to roll.
Okay. Thank you for being here.
Hopefully, we're on time and we'll finish on time.
Get out of your way.
Stick to the schedule. Obviously, we're here to update you on exactly where the Lamonster Police Station is. And as you know, probably you get the same questions that I get regularly. As soon as we picked a location, it was, when will it open? When we start construction? So I'm going to take you from the part where we picked a location to, as far as I can right now, and then we'll get you a third of the way there tonight. How's that? So here's a history of the site selection process. You might not be able to see all those little dots, but there's a list of some of the locations that we looked at. And one by one, we spent a lot of time evaluating each one of them. Some were, all of them were good. And then some of them we learned later on were in the floodplain district or just wasn't something that everybody on the committee was happy with and thought there was a better location. And so here we are many years later, and we've finally picked a site. Let's look at those, let's just real quickly look at where those properties are. 106 Central Street, that's a three-family. That would be on the left-hand side as you leave town. You have the Alzheimer's Park, and then go down two or three houses, and there's that three-family. That is one of the parcels that we'll be using. 112 Central Street, it's really the historic Witten Insurance Company appraisal and real estate office. 124 Central Street, which is owned by Garapi Furniture. Garapi uses the rear portion of that land for warehousing their furniture and mattresses and accessories. And then we go to the old Lincoln School on Cross Street. As much as I'd love to save that building, it is a well-built, structurally, incredibly well-built building. The footprint of it is on very little land. So even if we looked at it for housing, there's no parking to go along with it, and the building hasn't been used in many years. And so we could really, once you take the building down, the footprint is really amenable to the whole project that really makes for the extra parking space that we'll need for the police station. Here's the process that we have done after we decided. So after number one there, or slide number one, deciding a new location, the first thing that we had to do by law is advertise on the central register. We then approached, and Bill has been, Bill Mitchell, the chief assessor, has been absolutely fabulous and has really taken the ball and run with this to keep it going. And so we had approached the owners to negotiate acquisition prices. As you know, if it goes over 25% limit, then it requires of what the asking price is, then it requires appraisals. We inspected the properties and acquired rights of entry so that we could get in there and perform additional inspections. We had to know what we were purchasing. We did title searches to make sure that titles are clean. You want to do that before you spend a whole lot of money on the project. We applied for a grant for Phase One environmental site assessment, had purchase and sale agreements drafted, and had signatures on all of them, and also had to have our legal staff prepare and then analyze those, review them, and then approve them, perform Phase One environmental site assessments. And they got estimates for asbestos testings and surveys, and then appropriate money for the asbestos surveys. Inspected the properties for any encumbrances or easements, and that part is done. We consented, consulted with bond counsel because the next piece of this is actually going to be working with bond counsel to prepare the loan and bond for the purchase of the properties and borrowing of funds. So that all happened, as you know, I think I explained last time, we'll internally borrow. That's why it's good for us to have that stabilization account. We can internally borrow. And then when the project is complete, market looks right, city squared away on its finances, then we go out to permanent borrow. But there's no sense in permanently borrow, but there is sense in, well, part of the process has got to be that before we start a project, you have to approve the amount that we're going to spend and not to exceed on the project. And that part will be done, the bond authorization will be done, and we'll be able to move forward. What's next? The public hearing to be held on September 6th. That is organized by the city council. City council to vote on borrowing directly after the public hearing, we hope. City clerk to deliver the bond note to the mayor on September 7th for signature after your vote. A 20-day waiting appeal period before action can be taken on the appropriation. That's law. And then September 28th to the 17th, we actually go through the purchasing of the properties and record the takings, record them at the registry of deeds. And then what happens after that? We write the RFP for demolition of all the buildings. Once the asbestos testing is complete, we award the demolition contract because now we have the bond authorization that allows us to spend the money. But again, we'll temporarily borrow internally from ourselves, and then we demolish the buildings and do some pre-excavation site for Phase Two. And then we write the RFP for the police station design. We might, so some of this may, the RFP, writing the actual RFP to hire a designer will probably happen at the same time as we're writing the RFP for the demolition. So that'll all happen simultaneously. So we'll be looking to hire a police station design company. Usually, there are people that design police stations. That's pretty much their specialty. But we want to go ahead and hire somebody to do that, and we don't want to wait for all these other things to be done, then start to look for that. One thing, as you remember, we spent considerable amount of time, the people that were on the committee, we spent a considerable amount of time doing what the programming for the police station. And that's where the police chief and the staff at the station really came in instrumentally is that they were able to help us. So when we do the program, we want to know what space the police department needs for different programs within the police station. So whether it's a lockup or booking, or community space, locker rooms, report rooms, interview rooms, whatever it might be, it was that committee and the staff at the police department that went through literally square foot by square foot to determine exactly what the space needs, were required for this new police station. That part's been done. It may need some updating, but for the most part, that exercise is done. So when somebody new comes in or a new architect comes in to actually design the building, we're not going to have to go through that process again. We'll review that process, but the programming for the most part has been completed. You can go to the next slide.
I think that's it.
Okay, Bill, I don't know. I didn't realize I went through the whole thing here.
Yeah, it was pretty good. Included in your packets, the appraisals, so you have those for your records, the map of the properties, the purchase and sale agreements, any data that we have or that we've been through so far, just so you have it for your records and your review as well. At this point, we just would open up to any questions you have about the process we've been through so far or what we're about to go through, so you can make an appropriate vote on September 6th.
There was some discussion regarding coming out onto Lancaster Street at one point. Did you investigate that?
So the site-
The land acquisition?
Yeah, so the site committee at the time looked at those options. As you know, the site selection was limited. Coming out onto Lancaster Street via Cross Street seemed to be the best avenue at this point, unless we can purchase additional properties that abut that rear of that site in the future. That would allow us direct access to Lancaster Street at that point.
Do you have enough money right now where you could include that? Or?
If we include, we don't, because we're borrowing the funds, we don't have the money. So we just have to do additional borrowing to do that, and then that would delay with the process a little bit longer because then we would have to have purchase and sale agreements written up for that, include that in the central register, re-advertise, so you'd be talking about starting that process over again.
What we'll do is, we'll wait, we don't know what the, so the architect will do the actual plans, then they'll do cost estimating. We'll have an idea what that, you know, what the bids should come back at roughly. That will give us an idea. And then towards the end of the project, once we know that, of course, there'll be a contingency put in there. And then, once we get closer to the end of the project, we'll know if there's any funds, additional funds that we might be able to use for other site acquisition. But we won't know.
Yeah.
It's quite a task to go from the back of the police station to Lancaster Street. There's some elevation changes out there. On the map, it looks good, but, so we would wait because we'd really like to stay within that number that we've picked, you know, for the budget and leave enough in the contingency in the event that we run into, you know, issues or changes that need to be made that weren't foreseen. But for the most part, most of the people that'll bid on this project are people that have done police stations in the past. And, you know, the square footage is really this cost, the square footage cost is really going to be the square foot cost based on what's going on in the market at the time, how much work these, you know, contractors have. One good thing is Wendy had putting in for another Mass Works grant for 2.5 million. If we get that, those will be, there'll be infrastructure improvements that will be made that we won't have to make as part of this project. So that'll mean infrastructure improvements to Cross Street, Central Street, Central Court, Eden Glen, and Graham Street. And we'll know in October, November. We put in for 2.4 million, and we hope we get that. That'll mean replacement of about 4,000 feet of waterline, 5,000 feet of sidewalk, relining of 3,600 feet of sewer line, paving, drainage. And a lot of those things are things that we'd have to pay for in this project. So we're really hoping that we, we'll really be lobbying to get that money because it'll be a real boost for this project, and, you know, that's a considerable savings for us.
Yeah.
So that's not excluded entirely. It's just put aside for now, and we'll leave it as an alternate.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Sue?
Through the chair, I think this is really for the assessor. I've had questions from people in the community that, if you could explain to the public in general, the differences between the taxable value that if you go into the vision system, you can see something's estimated, you know, it's appraised at 150,000, and we're paying a little bit more than that, and particularly on the biggest piece, because I know that the city's paying a million dollars for that, but it's assessed, or not, assessed is not the right word, that's not the right terminology. But on the city's books in terms of taxable value, it looks a lot less. So I've had people express concern about that. So if you can explain the difference to the public, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. The first difference is the timeline, of course. Those assessments on the website right now are almost two years old because January 1st is coming up on us, and that's when the new assessments come out, and then the one will be a year old. So there's always a timing in between the market and what's happening currently. So that's number one. Number two is, we only inspect properties once every nine years if you haven't pulled out a permit, if you haven't filed for an abatement, or if you haven't sold your property. So the appraisal of the property or the assessment on it is based on the last time we were out there and did an inspection. Now, let's look at Mr. Garapi's property, for instance. It could be said that the environmental site assessment was done, there was nothing found, it was a Phase One site assessment. Not knowing what the marketability of that property is, or if there would be further contamination unless another site assessment was done, is unclear. So it affects the marketability of the property. So you don't really know what the assessment might be. You try to foresee some of those things or come up with your best market value, and that's based on land sales or future development, what's the highest and best use. All those things come into play. So it's a little bit hard. So in that particular case, we haven't been out to that property prior to us looking at it for purchasing. And it was, I think it was assessed at like 270,000 or something like that. Obviously, there was some factors on the land, you know, pulling it down in price. So that's why we immediately had an appraisal done on the property. So then that allows us to look at current market value, go out of the city for your comparable properties, see what the highest and best use is. Commercial appraiser did that, looked at the future development of that property. The site did appraise at 900,000, which is what you have in front of you, that appraisal you do have a copy of. And it didn't matter, the buyer, the seller wanted a million dollars. That was the bottom line. So we could either take it by eminent domain and pay the 900,000 plus moving expenses and relocation costs and attorney's fees. So when you're all said and done, if you pay that 900,000, and relocation fees is meaning moving a furniture business, they're storing their furniture into a similar building in a similar location with similar utility, you have to match that. So finding that and doing all that was well over 100,000 for attorney's fees. So it's like, let's just pay the million dollars, let's purchase it. Where else are we going to find almost three acres in the center of the city with a location with the police station? So that's when you kind of have us over a bar, and we got to pay what we got to pay in order to purchase the property. So in that particular case, we're paying, in my estimation, 100,000 dollars over fair market value. The other properties isn't a big of a difference. Same thing with the Witten property, hadn't been there in almost nine years. That was appraised, I think, at 179.9. He had two appraisals performed. One was given to us for 220,000, so that's well with it. You know, it's almost within the 25%, but we used the appraised value, and that's fair in that particular case. And then on 106 Central Street, they wanted the assessed value. The one that was on the books at the time, I think they were looking at 185, but we had it assessed at 222.7. Now, that one was opposite. Had I been in that property prior to us looking at it for purchasing and had updated along the way, we would have seen it was in as good a condition as we had thought, and maybe that assessment would have been a little bit different. But we're well within 10% of that market value as far as that goes. So it's a matter of timing, it's a matter of inspections, it's a matter of doing a fair market analysis on it and updating those properties throughout the years. So that's really what it comes down to. So whenever we purchase property, it's always a good idea to appraise it currently and then pay that price.
And the appraisal includes comparisons with other like parcels that have been sold?
Yeah, absolutely, it does.
All you have to do is get on the street, maybe five buildings down on the left. They just built a new gas station. You don't even have to go any further.
No, that land sold for a ton of money, 800,000, I mean, over 800,000.
It's hard to say, well, that property's, you know, when you're doing comparison, hard to say that property's worth what they paid for it down there, but this property isn't. And he's been approached by other people in the past and said no, so.
I'm not even, I'm not even arguing whether or not it's worth that money. It's just, I'm just trying to have the public have an explanation that makes, you know, that makes people comfortable, I think, with the whole transaction.
We had a lot of questions in my office as well.
Sure.
They knew I was part of the project, and those questions, it makes sense.
Yep.
You wonder, why are we paying a million if it's only assessed at this much?
Yep. So I have a follow-up for the mayor. So the 175.7 out of the 2 million, that includes everything, right? That includes the demolition cost for the school?
So that does, that's an estimate right now?
Right.
Okay.
And so that, based on what he has seen so far, the best estimation would include that. However, we put a little bit more in there because once the asbestos surveys are done, it could, it could show us that there's more asbestos that needs to be remediated, and that cost could go up. And he did warn us of that at the time he gave us the estimate, so that's why you see a little bit more than the 1.7 million.
At what point is the asbestos testing? I mean, is it halfway completed? Is it?
It's just starting.
It's just starting, okay.
Just talked to him this week.
Okay.
Just talked to him today.
Okay.
We had to get an estimate first so we could have you appropriate the money, which I think you appropriate $8,000 towards. I think the estimate is in there. I think it's about 4,600, 4,700, what is going to end the process.
4,800, yep.
He's going to start with the Lincoln School first, and then he's obviously going to move to the Witten Building. And the reason for that is because people are occupying those right now, so you don't want to tear into them or tear them apart until we close on those properties and we get that fully satisfied.
Okay. So it's a good estimate, and you still have a little bit of contingency in case there is more on the site that needs to be fixed?
That's correct.
Okay, good, thank you.
They'll issue a report, and from that report, we'll tell us exactly, you know, nobody's going to bid on the removal of the asbestos unless they see the report.
Right.
Once they see the report, that will tell them everything they can bid on.
Okay, thank you.
All set, councilor?
I am.
All set. Thank you. Councilman Frieda, you're welcome.
First of all, any of my comments exclude 112 Central Street.
Okay.
For possible conflict of interest. I know we keep coming back to the site. We looked at it many times. At one point, it wasn't affordable. We continued to look throughout the city as a committee, and it kept coming back to the site, which was a perfect location for the station. Mayor, my question, we've got two or three different sets of architectural plans between Jakunski and Yoom, and the other one that looked at Lancaster Street, is will you take those two sets? And I know they changed dramatically from the original, you know, the big computer room that now we don't need, and a lot of other parts of the station. But will they look at those and maybe try to modify some of those plans?
Yeah, that's the, that's the programming part. That's been done. And so the space needs studied, sort of, and then the programming. That's been done. And what we'll look at is, technology's changing so fast, you know, but at one time, we're looking for, I don't know how many thousand square foot, you know, room just to handle the service and all of that. More and more is going, as it becomes more secure, it's going to the cloud. And we'll be looking at, we're building a police station for the next 50 years or the next 60 years, and what does that look like in 10 years, 20 years, 30 years? In terms of, a lot isn't going to change. It hasn't changed since 1957 in terms of what the police department does, but the technology is certainly going to change. The Cruiser is a mobile police station at this particular point. I mean, that's the technology that, when we first started with mobile data terminals, they didn't work so great. Better and better, the technology's getting better, the computers are getting better, the airwaves in terms of transmitting messages is, they're more secure. So we'll be looking at, you know, each time a new police station has been built somewhere in New England or even through the country, we'll look at how that's changed in just a year or two or five. So that we take that programming information and adapt that to, you know, a futuristic police station that is going to include the technology that they need to do their job, and then room for expansion.
If we went back to Salem now and looked at the new one 20 years ago.
Outdated.
We'd find out all the problems they encountered since then. So you're right, and to go back and look at some of these that we looked at, it's a good indicator of what to avoid.
Just communications, just if we built a station 10 or 15 years ago, we'd be ripping apart the communications area because that alone has changed so much. And that's one of the key and most expensive parts of, is the area of dispatch. It's a whole profession in and of itself. It's, the technology's changing. We'll bring in on 911 so that when you call from your cell phone, it no longer goes to the state police and then transfer it back. All of that's evolving, and it's going to just continue to evolve more and more, and we've got to get, and we've got to look to the future and see exactly what that technology's going to be in five, 10, 20 years. I know, I went to a seminar 20 years ago, and they said, everything will be on your phone, your home phone number, everything will be there. And I said, there's just no way. Everybody's got a phone, it's got everything on it, pictures, music, their grocery list, one phone number, you know, people don't have a home phone anymore, texted, faxed, it messages, it does everything. And that's just in 20 years. We've just seen the beginning of what technology can do. So we really want to be on the forefront of that, and that's what this police station will be representative of. We'll look for the greatest minds in technology to help us out with where we need to be.
Well, the sites that we've looked at over the 20 years, this certainly was the best fit for us. So, you know, I'm really happy to see this get to this point.
All set? Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I know we're talking about land tonight, but at the end of the day, I remember when we built, when people built schools and they had to dig out the old furniture to bring in because there wasn't enough money for new furniture. So we're going to be in pretty good shape at the end of the day with what they need.
Yes.
Thank you.
And we're hoping that, you know, local company that's right here in Lamonster will bid on it.
Yeah.
I mean, there's tremendous opportunity here for local contractors and everything. That's what's really good about it. And, yeah, I mean, again, we have to wait till the final bids go out, and that will tell us everything.
Right.
And, you know, construction costs right now, you know, some days you put something out to bid, and there are a lot of companies that are finishing up projects. That's good for us. And there are other times when everyone's working and they just throw numbers out because, you know, they've got other work.
Okay.
So we're hoping to catch it at the right time.
Does it look like our timelines right on?
Yes, oh, no, we're moving along real fast here.
No, from our angle, we're going to, we're not holding you up at all as far as our schedule.
No, not at all. We're moving along, everything right to the T.
Okay. Not yet.
No, I don't anticipate any issues at all. We've done our due diligence. I think, you know, people say, well, you should have built it five years ago. And I remind people, that would require a debt exclusion and override to do that because we had these other projects. It's still our hope, fingers crossed, doing our best to do, that we will not have to, you know, do a debt exclusion or override or increase the cost of taxes for this specific project because we think we can do it from other bonds that are up, from other projects that are now expired, and we'll be able to take those and weave them and shift them over to this project. So that's, that's not done too common in the state of Massachusetts these days, so it comes at a perfect time. So may the project cost a little more, yes, but what were the chances of getting a debt exclusion and override passed five, 10, 20 years ago in some difficult economic times? I don't have a crystal ball, but I can only predict. So the stars are aligned, everything's moving along. We get to do some urban renewal. We still stay close to town, which is one of the things that we really, 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 I know you've shared the same sentiment, is the goal was to try to keep it as close to the downtown as we possibly can. It's a busy, busy, I look over there, and I'm amazed at how many people are walking in and out of that lobby for information on just about anything you can imagine. I don't know what it is. It's got some magic. It's history, it's a good location, and we didn't want to lose that. That's a real good community interaction, and it's not a great dispatch area or a great area of receiving. So we're not happy when people come to the front door because we can't really do our best at showing them a good public first impression. And, but they do their best over there, but it doesn't slow down the amount of people that walk through that lobby. I mean, they go through more carpet. If anybody knows a carpet person that says they got the best carpet in the world, go over and install it because there's people, just, and this isn't all people bailing people out or they got in trouble, it's just people comfortable while going in and asking for information and getting forms and those kinds of things. We didn't want to lose that. We've seen too many other communities find a piece of land somewhere and say, oh, let's just shove it there. And that never worked out. And it's one of the things that they regret the most, and probably the 20 or 30 police departments that I've talked to over time, is regretting not spending more time on finding the right location and just being too quick to go ahead and build a police station and get it out of the way. So I think this is a great location, and I appreciate the patience of everybody. There's over 100 people that are in and out of that building every day that work there, and they've kept it up the best that they could and keep it clean, and that was our overall objective. And so we hope very soon we'll have a new building to operate in, and the public will have a much more respectable and dignified and needed police station.
Thank you. I know that the chief is in the audience. Do you have anything you'd like to add to it, chief? Are you all set?
He wants to do yard sales.
There's a special room for that performance.
Sell all the furniture in there?
I'm just going to echo what the mayor said, you know, I was dramatically opposed to it not being downtown, someplace or close to downtown, and we're ecstatic with the location.
Good.
And we're excited. Absolutely.
Okay, thanks. Council, former councilor, city council president, citizen of the year, Jimmy Lancy Annie's in the audience. He's been involved with this for probably three decades with Council of Frieda. Council Lancy Annie, do you have anything you'd like to add to it?
It's about time.
Can you just grab the mic, please?
[laughing]
No, out of respect to you, no question.
It's about time. This goes back to me being personally involved when Mayor Richie Gerard was our mayor, and it's been nothing but a, not a bone of contention, it's the times and what we have to deal with. But I commend everybody that is looking at this in a way that we can get it done, the sooner the better. The police department, the city of Lamonster deserves better. Thank you.
Thanks, Jimmy. Thanks, Jimmy. Thank you. Sue, you had your hand up?
I did. I have a quick question. So assuming, this is for the mayor, so assuming that everything falls into place, the financing, the demolition, all that stuff, site work, what would be the timeframe for opening a new building? Is it eighteen months? Is it twenty-four months?
I hate to give anything out because you never know what might happen, but the biggest thing right now is to get that architect hired. Because they need to work on those plans, and it's going to take a while to develop those plans. And then it'll go out to bid, and then we start construction, we hope by the first of next year is when we start construction. It could be earlier, but that's what we're hoping for. We're already halfway through this year, and we've got a lot done. Believe me, this was a lot of work, you know, thanks to Bill and everybody that helped out. And, you know, we didn't, we don't have a facilities group in the city. We're the facilities group. It's us, there's five or six of us, and the city electrician. We're the people that manage the buildings and everything. There aren't, there is no other staff. So at the same time we're doing this, we're also working on, you know, the fields behind the high school. We've got to do some, by state standards, we've got to do some upgrades to the courthouse. Our lease is up, and we need, we're going to be signing a ten-year lease, but there needs to be some work done there. Remember the roof, our project's twenty years old, the roof is twenty years old. Not saying it needs a new roof, but the HVA system is twenty years old. So we're working on a year extension on the lease with the court. And so we're working on that. Again, that's us. There is no crew on that. So we're going to keep all these projects moving, all the grants that we're keeping moving. That's the staff that we have. But nothing's at a stall, everything's moving along, thanks to an ambitious crew, people that never say no.
I think that's, to answer your question, one of the hardest things is that those RFP processes. You know, you've got to put those out for a certain amount of time, get the appropriate bids, review those.
File sub bids.
Exactly. And have, and just make sure you're doing your due diligence. You don't want to rush through it for the sake of getting it done, but let's do it the right way. Go through that bidding process, make sure we pick the right people for the job. If it takes another month or two months, then that puts us, you know, if we don't get to put the shovel in the ground on January 1, but it ends up being April of 2020, it is what it is. But hopefully, we'll just keep pressing along and moving along so we can get this done as soon as possible.
That's right. Councilman Feckley, do you have your hand up?
I just have a comment. So the mayor and Bill, last time you both were down here about this, I said that I was impressed. And now I'm very impressed and hopeful. So I think that this is great information. I think it's a great location. And Bill, thank you again for explaining things to us, you know, the common man about those kind of evaluations so that people can understand that's very important information.
Yeah, we don't want people to say, you paid, you know, three million dollars for something that's worth a half a million.
Exactly.
We should all be able to explain that, that in, you know, this situation, we found land, right? And so let me give you a couple of other scenarios of a couple of the other spots that we looked at. Had we acquired those properties, it meant demolition of a number of properties. Here, we're talking an office building and then, you know, a small warehouse in the back in the building. But we, it would have been millions just to do the demolition on some of those buildings, let alone acquiring the sites. And there were a number of places that came to us and said, well, buy us for, you know, the building and everything for three or four million. And we were like, the building doesn't do any good for us. We have to demolish the building. And we still had a small piece of land, like an acre and a half to two acres. So in the end, when you weigh it all out, due diligence, I think, between the committee and everybody that worked with, coming up with ideas and circulating things, when you do the cost analysis and do the spreadsheet and look at, you know, cost versus, you know, cost of demolition and the cost of acquisition, this is far less expensive. And we stayed within the state guidelines, which doesn't allow us to go over by twenty-five percent. And we didn't go to them and say, well, what do you want for the building? We want a million. So, well, we're going to go twenty-five percent above that. These were people that owned the buildings, paid, you know, GARP, I know for a fact by just going through the registered deeds, you can see what they paid for the property. So this isn't much more than what they paid for the property, and they've had it for all these years, and have other offers on the property, so.
They also had demolition expenses with Miles Kade's property.
Very much so.
That's right.
Yes. So I just want everybody, so while we're making the public, you know, aware of all this, at the end of the day, it may not be, you know, it may not seem like small potatoes. It isn't. It's a lot of money. It's millions. But at the same time, when you do the cost analysis and the benefit to the whole thing, it's less than, or far less than what we would have paid in all these other sites.
Councilman Bonanza?
Yeah, I just think, I echo the other comments here this evening. Really like the site, and it's not insubstantial to be eliminating a very large obsolete building. That's the city's responsibility, and picking up the land area in exchange, I mean, I think that's a really nice part of this project.
I'd love to save the building. I love history like you do. Lincoln School, you go inside the building, it just, what's going to happen is it's going to be another cottage junior high because we can't get people interested in the building, and it doesn't have enough usable square footage in there to make it worth, making the improvements that you need to bring it up to code.
Right.
So what does that mean? That means it'll sit there and deteriorate and maybe it could go on for decades.
It would have been the city's liability for potentially no real gain if this wasn't the site.
Forever.
Or really, minor gains.
We're dealing with this one.
That's another very great part.
And it really lends itself to the way it slopes down from an multi-story building. It's the best that we could find.
So we'll be dealing with this at 6:00 PM on September 6th. I'm going to encourage the councilors, if you have any other questions that come up, which might, you can contact Bill directly if that's okay?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. We're going to push on now to Pleasant Street. You have the floor.
So you have a packet in front of you for 1183 Pleasant Street. This was brought to our attention. I'm just turning this off so you can...
And just so you understand, when we get these, when we get, every so often, we'll get somebody that's interested in selling the property, and they will often come to us, even though it's not required. In some situations, it's required that it's 61A or B, that if you're going to change the use of it, that you come to the city and offer it to it. By law, we have so many days, sixty days or thirty days to respawn. But as we get people that are interested, and we're not trying to put the council in a difficult spot, but just let you know that sometimes people feel that this might be something the city's interested in. I don't want to be the person that says yes or no for the whole city because there may be interest in it. So we simply bring these down, and remember, we brought the one down on Central Street. We bring this one down just to see if there's any interest in it. That's all we bring it down for. It isn't a vote to acquire the land or anything, just to see whether or not you want us to continue on our due diligence to get more information about the property.
Right. We're at a critical stage here where we're spending money on a police station. This is a, this is a good opportunity for us because, as you can see in the packet, what you're going to see is, there's three sections in your packet. And just to go through it real quickly so you don't have to be bored with all of the details, I gave you all the information, so you do have it for your review in case you have questions later. But Mr. Bedard is in the audience tonight. He's here to witness this. He was the one who brought it forward to our attention. We do own all the way around the property. Shoal and Farms does own all the way around this property. It was one of the original pieces that was subdivided out years ago. He had a market analysis done on it by Century 21 that was close to, I believe, eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand, would have been the market value. However, that would have included subdividing an additional four parcels from that land. After doing a little bit of deed research, I noticed that there was a deed restriction that does not allow this property to be subdivided. That was from the original Shoal and Farm owners, and the original owners of the five parcels of Shoal and Farm, which is now us, that would have to grant that permission to be subdivided in order to make that market value. So section one just explains that to you. Section two is another market analysis that Mr. Bedard had done about La Makiya Real Estate. The market analysis is in there with the comparable sales. So you can see what they were looking at when they were trying to come up with a market value. And then at the end of the section, I did a market analysis myself. So this, this property could be anywhere from four-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand up to six-hundred-and-ninety thousand is where this lies. So given that estimate, the purpose we're here tonight is to see, before I go into any further work or finding out where this money might come from to purchase this property, what the use might be, would be better served by talking to Joanne Donato, what Shoal and Farms would use this property for, what the benefits for the city would be. My particular reason for being down here is to see what the appetite of the council is for purchasing this property and spending that, those additional dollars with everything we have going on. Given that, that's why I have Mr. Bedard here tonight, in case you have any direct questions for him, and why he is willing to sell the property to the city at this point. Maybe he can talk about his timeline a little bit, but I don't want to hold him up from selling this property if we have an interest in purchasing it. Because once we have an interest, then we have to go through similar hoops like we did with the police station, negotiate a price. We have to do title searches, we have to do appraisal. Would be appropriate on this property because of its uniqueness, to determine that process and then go through the purchase and sale agreement and get all those things lined up for a closing appropriate to money, and then purchase the property.
Can the gentleman please join us? Steven, come on in. Mr. Bonanza, you have the floor.
I was just going to ask, Bill, I, just rough calculation, it looks like it's just about...
Come, sit down. Come on in. Sit down. Very comfortable seat. Don't think you have to knock another fifty thousand off it for that seat, which is genuine kindness.
He just said the price went up.
The price went up.
Bill, just roughly calculating this, looks like it's about, just about four-point-six acres of land total.
That's correct.
And it looks like the land, of course, adding that kind of additional acreage to Shoal and Farms would be nice. There's a nice home, obviously, on the property. Would there be any kind of potential to reconfigure the lot that goes with the house? In other words, buy the property as a unit?
Take the house and put it on a lot?
Put, configure a lot for the house, market the house to somebody with the appropriate restrictions consistent with Shoal and Farms, and then essentially gain the land in the process? Is that something that, I mean...
I wouldn't say that's impossible because in the deed restriction, it specifically says that the subdivision of this lot can no longer, it cannot be subdivided any further than what it is right now without permission written from the original Shoal and Farms owners. The way the deed's written, it's, there's five parcels, and then there's parcel six and seven. The original owners of those five parcels are the people who will decide if this can be subdivided any further. Those original owners are now us. So we would, the city, I'm assuming we'd have to go through council to see if that's appropriate, if we can give the permission to Mr. Bedard to subdivide this out any further, and then allow him to sell the house and us acquire the land. I will tell you that I did go up and inspect the property, Joanne Donato did as well, my assistant, Rick. When you go up there to look at that property, it is a beautiful piece of property. There's no doubt about it. When you, when you sit there and you look at that, it is an estate-type of property. The land is beautiful. The, it would be a shame, I think, in a way, to cut it up and subdivide it further, and then us grab the orchard part of it, and then try to determine how we would subdivide out the barn and the house.
But I think you could, I think the answer is, would we, I think, I feel the same way. I would like to, I'm in favor of purchasing it if we can come to an agreement, but I think the answer is yes. Legally, I think we can separate the building, probably, yeah, separate the building from the land. But it sort of takes away from the whole piece of the property.
So that leads to my next question. What do we do with the house?
I think the part of the Shoal and Farms plan was, and always, I mean, they've always had this, we've talked to Steve over the years. Steve was just a young guy when we started paying. Still a young guy. But, you know, we've talked for a good ten or so years about this, knowing that someday he'd get to this point. We wanted to make sure we kept the lines of communication open in the event that we were in a position to purchase it because it really does fit in with their overall plan. So...
So would they convert this home to?
Offices.
Offices and space for their activities?
Correct. And that would be less that they'd have to put into that new building that they're looking to put, which is more of the retail, the events portion of it all. But it's just go out there, I mean, you've been up there. It's a historic home, and it's just got some beautiful views. Go out there and stand in the backyard, and it really ties in. And, you know, we have done, you know, with the acquisition of all the open space that we've got in Shoal and Farms, and Lomondstah's reputation now is, you know, we're the, you know, sort of recreational area here, and it's turned into dollars for a lot of the businesses that are here, and this is just a piece of it. And Shoal is going to, you know, they know, and everyone knows, we've got to take it to that next step. You know, they've done a great job of what they've done, but now it's time to bring it to the next, you know, to the next level.
Is this, this the last structure before the Sterling Line on that side of the street?
Yes. And there was another piece that the Placex owned that was in the Sterling Side, and they sold that. There's a house up there, and even if you, I stood in the driveway the other day, it's, it's amazing. It's beautiful. It's just a beautiful piece of land. So I, just so you know, where I stand on it, I would love to buy the property, but again, we need, we don't want to, you know, we don't want to use, you know, valuable time, everyone's time to pursue it further if there's no interest. And if there's no interest, it's fine. It's just, we'd like to know, and if we'd like to know, we'll go back to work on it.
Fair enough.
And continue with Steve. And then at the end, if we still, you know, do some more work on it, and it's not something that you're, you know, that sounds right at the time, there's too much going on, we'll certainly let you know. But we fear it's only fair to Steve to let him know so he can pursue his other options. I mean, right now, it's a great real estate market. These are exact properties people are looking for. They're historic, they have a lot of land, and they're in special places. So it's, you know, it's only fair to us to let them know that we're, you know, interested and want to pursue it and do our due diligence. And that won't take very long for us to do our part and be back here pretty quickly.
Steve, what's the age of the building?
Actually, officially, it's 1815, but it's 1783 as far as when they got it, they actually built it. It's in historical commission, register they have it there. I mean, it's twelve rooms, almost four thousand square feet, seven fireplaces. I mean, I, the thing is, I know you can invite you all there and look at it.
We're coming up for dinner.
And you walk, and you walk them back, and they're going to say, I want to buy it. You know what? Everybody asks me, why am I leaving?
Want a house?
Well, twelve rooms, just the two of us now. Time moves on. I'd rather sell it to the city than have somebody buy it and maybe apply for the change in the restrictions on the deed and put four houses that you'll never get.
Just my two cents, when I, when I first saw this proposal, I just fell in love with it. It's just, your house is amazing.
Yeah, it's gorgeous.
I haven't gone in it, I didn't walk around it, but I saw it from the road. I drove up there again today. It's just absolutely beautiful. And I have...
Go in the back. It's the highest point on the hill.
Yeah.
Of all of them. I still have two hundred apple trees.
Yeah.
And I tried to keep those just for the sake of, in case this happens. They can be brought back. I don't take care of them. I clean them up, make them eat. I don't spray them, so I don't have any good apples.
Earlier this year, I actually met with Joanne, her new employee over at the trailer. I don't know if any of you have been in that trailer. It's basically condemnable. There's no question. It, there's nothing, I mean...
It serves its useful purpose.
It's taking care of its need right now. To think about going to work in that thing every day, and that's, you know, that's your office is tough, you know. And there's some good people that volunteer up there that kind of go beyond that. But I can't even fathom how awesome that your property is going to be for that group and what they could do in that. Oh my gosh, it's just awesome.
She had Senator McGovern up there Wednesday, and he took a peek over, and he wants to move in when he retires.
Yeah, yeah. But anyway, that's my position. Let me start over here on the left, it started with Councilman Inger.
The, thank you. The property is a beautiful piece of property. It would certainly be a nice acquisition for the city and Shoal and Farms. My only thought would be, it'd be nice to hear from Joanne Donato how she envisioned using the property.
Yeah.
So just as a comment, but I'm sure she can find some great use for it, like you said, but it'd be nice to know.
Yeah. Sure, some projections on what the use would be. That's awesome. Good, good question. Councilor, call me, anything?
Thank you.
Councilor Pauling, call me first. I'll start. Dave, go ahead.
I've actually been in the house years ago. I went to school with Matt at St. Leo's, and our kindergarten class went there for a field trip.
Still looking for a few of the kids.
Yeah.
Four rooms, four thousand square feet, just looking for a few.
I, I don't have a very sharp memory of, you know, the house, but I know, I remember going there for a field trip. And I'm sure it's beautiful, you know, it's beautiful from the outside. And, you know, there's a few things that come to mind. You know, I know that, Mayor, you had talked about a dog park in the city, and...
Don't say that because the next day, you're going to get phone calls.
Yeah, right.
You're putting a dog park up at Pleasant.
That didn't work out so, that didn't work out so well with the property on Central Street. But, you know, maybe we could work with, you know, use a piece of this land as something that comes to mind. You think so?
Oh, yeah.
Or, or, you know, the other things that come to mind are, you know, if we were to purchase a property, where we get the funding from. I know we have an open space fund, but I don't think we have a ton of money in there. You know, with the Friends of Shoal and Farm, you know, I know they turn over some revenue in what they do. Would they be helping out with this as well? So those are some things that I have on my mind, too. But, you know, certainly, I like the idea of, you know, of potentially purchasing this. I, I think the city could put it to some good use, so I'm glad that we have the opportunity and...
And again, once we get some sort of feedback from you, a little bit of a pulse, we'll go back and, you know, again, we'll spend the time on, do we have the funds to purchase this? Are there grants available? You know, what the Shoal and Farms group, you know, plans on, how they plan on using the building. You know, all those things, we'll be able to come back to. But for the sake of tonight's meeting, it was just to get a sense of where everybody's at. You want us to continue to pursue it, or is it just, we don't want to waste this time, let them, it's a good real estate market. We don't want to be letting them know in November and December when real estate sort of, you know, softens until the spring. He'd like to know, and we'd like to give him, you know, we don't mind putting the energy and the time behind the next piece of it, but we just don't want to go any further, just to come back and make him wait and come back and say, eh, you know, we don't think that's a good move right now.
Well, it's feeling pretty good up to this point. Dave, you all set? Councilman Frieda next?
I'm sure the interior has been all updated. It's...
Well, I've...
Well, updated.
I don't have a doorknob in the house. Everything's a latch. I got forty doors.
By updated, I, maybe maintained would be the better term. Maintained to its age. age.
The bathroom, there's two full bathrooms updated, yes.
Now, did these, a market analysis, did they go into the property?
Yes, they did and they couldn't come up with anything. It took them two weeks just to try to figure out how to compare it to something, there's nothing to compare it to.
The Sturbridge villages.
Yeah, you know, at the spot. That's what everybody does, they go, wow.
I'm not saying I would've done any better, but looking at some of the comparable sales they used, I don't, I don't agree.
No, they're not even, no, there's nothing-
They're not even close.
No, no.
And I know Bill kind of alluded to that, to have to go back at least three years, which you would have to do, maybe even more, to find something comparable, but, you know, to have an appraisal done would be the right way to do it, so we'd have a better idea on the cost. I, I mean, it certainly- Of it, I really wouldn't wanna see a dog park though, but I think, you know, the, the house just has such a stature to it, it kinda tells the story of Shoal and Farm and I agree with that. I'd wanna know, I'd want a better idea of the cost than an appraisal would do that, an accurate appraisal, so we could, I wouldn't wanna take anything away from the police station at this site, at this point. I mean, that's crucial. We did that 20 years ago with a courthouse to save it and never recouped in those 20 years, so I would, I'd be supportive if we can over, not affect the police station and if we get a, a better number than, I don't agree with the market analysis. I mean, I'd go more with Bill's.
Definitely can't be a dog park though.
No.
They'll be chasing rabbits and deer. Counselor Dabrowski?
No, I, I agree with, I agree with Counselor Freed's comments. I, I think I'd be in support of it, just, you know, but, but I think those are two, two areas to look at, but I would be in support of it, yes.
Thank you. Counselor Schalafo Zephyr?
Yep, thank you very much. In order for me to really be supportive completely, I'd need to know the financing plan, how are we gonna pay for it?
Yep.
So that's, that's what I would wanna know and that would really help move me in the right direction, I think.
Thank you. Counselor Feckley?
I would be supportive too. I agree with Counsel Freed and Counsel Schalafo Zephyr about knowing, you know, getting another appraisal, knowing the financing plan, but Mr. Bernard, when you said about four houses, you know, up there, just, it just doesn't fit in that, you know, historic location, so I think it's something that should be pursued.
Yeah, so when we come back, what we'll have is a better market analysis or appraisal of what the property's worth. We'll have a presentation by Joanne to say exactly how it fits in. We'll have a look at whether we qualify for any, are there any grants out there that we might, I, I think everybody from the state and the federal government that's seen it, all the people from USDA that were there the other day, I mean, if everybody's at agreement, this is, these are special places, you can't, it's like going to Fruitland saying, we're gonna build houses up there. You know what I mean? You wouldn't do that, you wouldn't even think of it. So that, everyone has the same reaction and then also, you know, the financing plan and then how it fits in with the city's overall economic development plan, which, which a lot of it is open space and recreational pieces, which we, you know, have done very well with and that continues to expand and benefit local businesses and it's one of the attractions for when people are buying homes, is that you own an apple orchard and you own, you know, thousands of acres of, of open space, that's part of your backyard, that's been a huge draw for the city. So we'll do that in the next presentation, so as soon as we get that, we'll come back and, but at least I think it's safe to say, the feedback that I get is, continue to pursue our negotiations with Steve and, and ask him to put it on hold for a little while until we can get back. We need it probably a month or two, month and a half probably.
Yeah, I think that's the next appropriate thing, is let's, let's go ahead and get a market appraisal done, Steve, and then that way we'll have a better idea and it's part of the negotiation process anyway between what we can pay and what, what Steve wants.
Right.
And that would be appropriate and then we can, then we can go from there.
Okay, one more question. Counselor Freed, please.
Not a question as much as a comment. I think we ought to thank you, Mr. Bedard, for coming to us with it. It would've been a very easy sale, but the location, the view, the surroundings, it would've been very easy for you to just turn around and sell it. So, you know, I, I just wanna thank you for bringing it to us and giving us the opportunity to look at it.
I always planned on, if something was happening, to try to keep it as it is and try to make it part of the orchard. I know it was part of the master plan of Shoal and Farms to acquire my property and the Comos' property. It's tough to move, it's tough to leave that place, but it might be time.
From a hardware guy-
Yeah.
Right? Who's had to replace, how many, how many fireplaces, seven?
Seven fireplaces and a wood stove on the chimney, yeah.
Can you just imagine, all went along, running around in the day, in the late 1700s, 1800s?
There's actually two Beehive up there.
Amazing.
Right? Put the phone down, kid, you gotta go fire up those, right, bring in some wood. As soon as one goes out, 10 minutes later, the next one's out, right? Just imagine that.
Okay, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Nice seeing you tonight, thanks for coming down. Wendy, would you, Billy, would you mind moving that out here? Thank you. Ladies, watch out for it. What's that? Yeah, yeah. We're gonna get right into the public forum right now. We may have to pause for a moment at 7:30. Actually, we're gonna wait till 7:30. We'll start the meeting, have the public forum, we'll recess, have the public forum and then we'll have the interviews and then we'll go back in the session. So you have three or four minutes to stretch, if you like. What a nice house, oh my god.
Everybody's in like white and like gray, like really dark colors.
The City Council for August 27th is now in session. Please stand and join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We'll begin the meeting with a roll call vote of the honorable members of the council, beginning with Counselor Freed.
Here.
Counselor Dabrowski.
Present.
Counselor Schalafo Zephyr.
Present.
Counselor Feckley.
Present.
Counselor Bonanza.
Present.
Counselor Odinger.
Present.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Present.
All nine members are present, thank you very much. Is the Chairwoman of Records ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. I have the minutes of the regular meeting of the City Council on June 25th, 2018, and I find them to be in order and ask that they be placed on file.
Excellent, thank you, thank you. Before we, we, I ask for a motion to recess. I'd like to spend a moment, Lemester lost another great citizen, a person that was a, a big part of thousands and thousands of children as they were growing up. We refer to him as Psych Tossy, Donald Tossy was his name. This 23rd of, this past Thursday, the 23rd, he was laid to rest in St. Leo's and St. Anne Cemetery. Psych Tossy, to me, reminds me so much of Dickie LaBelle. Some, many of you knew Chewy LaBelle. And he just had a way with young men. In all of my years of knowing him and the kids that he touched, as they grew up, not dozens or hundreds, but thousands of kids that probably had one foot out the door when it came down to having a hard time at home, hard time with money, hard time in school, he kept them on course. He was that kind of a guy. And not only did he coach pop water football and youth football and high school football for 50 years of his life, after he finally retired, he spent the next decade or so working at Lemester High School as hall monitor. Now, you talk about a tough job, it probably doesn't get any tougher than that, you know, when you're trying to get kids that are running amok to get them in a classroom, get them in a building. But his love and his passion to just be a guy with genuine kindness, reach out, so many people had so much respect for him and if you didn't know him and you got a chance to know him, they understood, you know, the deep rooted values he had about being a man, being a good person, giving back to your community and just a great, great person. I know he touched my life, he's touched so many lives. I just wanna share with you also that the first home game for Lemester High School's gonna be taking place the second week and the football team, the cheerleaders, the band and also the parents would like to dedicate that game to him. So, you know, if you come down there now, you'll probably hear one of the favorite songs he used to like to sing at all the weddings and places where he could grab a microphone. We're gonna be playing it for the family, but in the meantime, that will be a night we have a chance to remember him. We're also getting together as a family, we're gonna be getting together with the family to be talking about a dedication bench, maybe a Doyle Field or the Pop Warner Field and a few other things, which the top and foremost thing that was brought to our attention was how do we do a scholarship for kids? You know, so we're gonna be working on that for the family as well. So a great gentleman, a great friend to football, a great friend to the community and a guy that is loved by so, so many people. He's now in the great heavens above with no question, probably watching some Monday Night Football game preseason thing with Togo Palazzi and the rest of the guys up there and people, you know, so I'd like to ask if we can give him a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Any other comments on that? Counselor Freed?
Not on Psych Tossy, but I'd also like to remember Dan Curley-
Dan Curley, yeah.
-who also was very instrumental in the city of Lemester.
Thank you. Let's have a moment of silence for Dan also, all right? Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Counselor Cormier?
I just wanted to add that in addition to Psych Tossy's coaching of football, I also had him as a coach for St. Anna's girls' basketball.
That's right.
Now, that-
That's right.
-that is a challenge in and of itself.
Yeah.
So I think he deserves some kudos for, for taking time out of his life for the girls' basketball program at St. Anna's.
Yeah.
And he was great with the collection basket too, because if you didn't put anything in, he hesitated with it for a while.
Psych Tossy used to bring his kids in pop, on the pop water team regardless of the denomination, they all went to church on game days, isn't that amazing? And they all went to. They had no choice on that one. Psych was tough. Any other comments? Okay, thank you. Do you have a motion for recess?
So.
Okay, seconded. Thank you, we're in recess. Okay, I'll yield the floor, I'm gonna do the public forum first and then we'll write the ways and means, all right? All right, thank you. Okay, let's see. Public forum is now open. This is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on any matter specifically listed on the council agenda this evening. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone, state their formal name and address along with identifying the specific item or items you wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep the comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be able to respond or answer any questions, however, at the discretion of the council president, if clarification is needed, it will be given. The first person to speak tonight, Mr. Lancy Andy, former city councillor, council president, citizen of the year, veteran of the year, Mr. Lemester, right here. Nice to see you tonight.
Thank you, thank you very much. My name is James Lancy Andy Jr. I'm here this evening to speak on some subjects that if I was still sitting here with you this evening, that I would be voting in favor of and I would just bear your indulgence and keep in mind what ones I would support. C6, which is for the purchasing of the land for the police station. I am glad that I'm still alive and able to see some fruition come to something that was started back during the Richie Gerard administration and I was on that committee and have been on that committee since, waiting for a new police station. Seven is Mark Bonanza and Sue Schalafo requesting to revise a city ordinance and I think that it's, it's time to revise it. O919, which is the rules and procedure, I would support that.